Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 6th Select Board Meeting for the Town of Milton. On July 16, 2022, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2023. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July 15, 2022 to March 31, 2023. As a result, all votes during this meeting will be by a roll call. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving as your chair this year. I'd like to introduce the other members of the Select Board. Mr. Zulus.
Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Richard Wells, Secretary.
Aaron.
Aaron Bradley, Member.
Roxanne.
Hi, Roxanne Musto, Member.
Town Administrator is with us.
Nicholas Milano.
And the Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator in the Select Board.
Hi, Ellen.
Thank you. Let us now please join together for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the Flag and the United States of America. To the Republic, where which it stands, one nation, under God.
Indivisible, liberating, justice.
Justice for all.
At this time, we turn to item number three on the agenda, public comment. Just as a refresher, we set aside 15 minutes at our meetings of the Select Board for public comment. Those wishing to comment are asked to identify themselves by name and address. Primary focus, but not exclusively, would be on agenda items for this meeting. And I'd be remiss in not saying, having been sitting in this chair now for about six months, how grateful we are to the way in which, the manner in which remarks are provided to the Select Board. Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. You may recall, in the past two years, I have come before the citizens of the town through this board, not as a board member, but as a citizen. As you know, and the members well know, and the citizens well know, we are entering a time of year where the holidays often highlight some of the needs that many people truly depend on that can't have. For several years now, I've conducted a townwide drive each year to collect crockpots for mothers who make requests through my Brothers Keeper, which is a community-based organization, both in Easton and now Dartmouth and New Bedford. My Brothers Keeper will bring the holidays to over 14,000 people in metro Boston and about 5,500 families. This includes, unfortunately, many families in this community. I learned as a young rookie policeman, you can ride around on a mock car all day long, but if you just look at front doors, you won't see what goes on inside each home. And sometimes, often too many times, even in our own hometown, it's cases of hardship that no one should have to go through, especially at the holiday season. So this year, the, some of the board members asked me if I would consider collecting air fryers. And the air fryers, and I'm trying to be brief here, are usually, the number one request of mothers in the years that I've been there has always been something for the kitchen, something as simple as a frying pan or a boiling pan. It was three years ago that, just as a fluke, a mother was asking for a utensil for her kitchen for Christmas as her significant gift that year. And just went out and bought a crock pot, and it's taken off since then. And in that time, I filled my pickup truck with over 250 crockpots. They've all been delivered to families throughout the area. So this year, I'll post it all up tomorrow. I know a lot of people already have been asking me if I want to do this. And I said I would mention it tonight, is that Saturday, this Saturday, I don't know what the, I don't even know what the date is. Whatever this Saturday is, it's December 7th, 10th? 9th, thank you, Mr. Chair. This Saturday will be the first, my pickup truck will be at Town Hall, and I'll have it all posted tomorrow from 10:30 to noon time. These are, they can bring them unwrapped, any kind, it doesn't have to be a high-end air fryer. Most of the donate, the donies who, this town has been so generous in showing up, anything you can grab will be awesome. And the staff of my Brothers Keeper will wrap them, and the delivery crews will deliver them with the orders that have been going out now every day since last week. So I thank you for your time on that, Mr. Chair, and I thank the citizens of the town who've been so generous in the past. And I look forward to seeing them again this Saturday. If they can't be there Saturday, they can print, they can message me, email me on my town website, PMB, whatever. Thank you for that time on that, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. Wells. And I go into the penalty box for guessing that Saturday was the 9th, when it is the 10th.
Okay. The 7th, 10th, I'll post it up tonight, I'll have it, I'll have it out there. So thank you very much for that.
That's great. We have three hands raised in attendance roster. The first is Cindy Christensen. Can she be promoted, please? Dr. Christensen, you are recognized.
Hi, this is Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collmar Street. Just to start off with something kind of funny, that the, the meeting's transcript interpreted what Select Board Member Wells is saying is that it's a drive to collect crocodiles for mothers. So I'm sure that that will be corrected. I just saw lilelile crocodile, so it, it's kind of funny that that's what turned up. Anyway, that's a good plan, a drive for crockpots, not crocodiles. To start my statement, I continue to be concerned that the Select Board is wasting taxpayer money on the 4L RNAV appeal. Instead of working with the FAA on runway use restrictions, or instead of asking the FAA to disperse northeast configuration arrivals to fly over all of Milton, you have decided to use tax dollars to let a few attorneys play an expensive game with our money, a game that has zero chance of winning, and that if you were to win, the win would only protect people who get relatively few aviation noise events now. This appeal is an expensive insult to those of us who live under the heavily used 4R. And you have missed these opportunities, opportunities that Milton will never get again. Just because the people you have chosen to take advice from know more than you does not make them experts. In my opinion, they are pretend experts who have convinced you to trust that they know enough to win an appeal against the FAA. They do not. I recently reviewed Massport's latest EDR. The previous Select Board wrote a comment for that ADR. There is so much in that, in their comment, that is incorrect, that it should be embarrassing to us and to you as a Select Board. I'm sure that Massport and the FAA love it, though. You are paying pretend experts for write-ups like this, and it needs to stop. Your legacy on this topic will be one of failure. The town residents will be the loser, and the loss will come because of your lack of leadership and your inability to hear what you don't want to hear from people you don't want to listen to. I encourage you to open your mind to my advice. I know more about aviation issues than you, and I know more about aviation issues than your trusted advisors. Stop your selective listening and open your mind for the sake of Milton residents. I also request that you verbally announce all attendees of your executive session meeting on the 4L appeal before you go behind closed doors. That's it.
Thank you. Well, at this time, recognize Mr. Phil Joe Henning. Mr. Joe Henning, you have been promoted and you are recognized.
Hi, this is Phil Joe Henning, 23 Parkwood Drive, Milton. I have two quick things to mention. One is, I have made complaints about yard waste pickup because it hasn't been done on schedule. But my problem isn't with the yard waste pickup. It's with the town failing to respond to telephone calls, emails, et cetera. I want to make it clear that I, as a resident, expect town employees to respond to me when I reach out to them. I don't do it every day. I don't probably do it every month or every six months. But when I do, I expect the Chief of Police, the Town Manager, the Head of Public Works, whoever it is, to get back to me. If they choose not to get back to me, I expect one of their assistants to get back to me, to understand my concern and pass it on to the right person. I really insist that the town be responsive to me as a resident so that we can work out a schedule so that I know what is expected of me. It would be a lot easier if we could just talk to one another. The second thing I'd like to say, following on to Cindy Christensen's comments, is I am totally opposed to this 4L appeal. I think it's the wrong thing for the town to do. What it would mean if you were successful, which you won't be, but if you were, it would mean that people in East Milton would be permanently punished with 90% of airplane traffic, which is the wrong solution. What needs to happen is we need to disperse flights over all of Milton so that all of us suffer equally. I think that's the fair thing. A few, two months ago, Mr. Hart said at an ANAC meeting that he was going to write a letter for the Select Board, and I don't understand that that has been done yet. He said that he would write a letter that would request that the MCAC look at dispersing flights over Quincy and Braintree. That's supposed to help East Milton, but it, the letter wasn't done, and so there's no help so far for East Milton. All that's happening is that we're trying to help the other side of town, which doesn't really need help. We have 90% of the traffic, inbound traffic going for, for our. So we are the people who need help, not the other side of town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Rachel Posa. Can you promote Rachel, please? Good evening and welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for taking my time to hear what I have to say. I'll be brief. I, I recognize that I'm probably a little bit late in adding my voice to what I hope is a chorus to strongly encourage the board to reinstate the youth task force. You know, prior to the pandemic, we clearly established the force in recognition of the need for adolescents in our town to have a space in which they could join together, engage in constructive recreation, and have a space of their own. And just in acknowledgement of the fact that community and belonging is so important to this age group. And, you know, that hasn't changed. And actually, since the pandemic, I think that we all recognize that there's been a negative impact on mental and social well-being, particularly among adolescents who are sort of coming of age right now. I'd argue that the need for the task force is even greater than it was when it was first instituted. So like I said, I'll keep it brief, but I just really encourage you to, to consider reinstating it. I hope my suggestion is not too late, and I, you know, thank you for your time.
And thank you, most appreciated. Before we go on to item number four on the agenda, I wanted to mention that we will be going into executive session with item number five. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee will be joining us to do so. We will be leaving this meeting as we are in executive session, and then we will come back to this meeting to complete the meeting following that executive session. So at this point in time, we're on agenda number four, which is public hearing, property tax classification and the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Law. And we will have a discussion and approval of the vote on shifting for the fiscal year 2023 real and personal property tax rates. We should be having with us for this discussion Chair of the Board of Assessors, Brian Cronin, and our Chief Appraiser, Charles O'Shea. Can they be promoted to panelists, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us. Brian Cronin, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I'm just gonna, I'll introduce our new Chief Appraiser, Charlie O'Shea, who joined us a couple of months ago after Bob Bushway's retirement. So Charlie's gonna run through some numbers, and then I will give you the recommendation. We'll go from there with any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Welcome, Charlie.
Oh, thank you very much. So I'm just going to share my screen.
Sorry, if I may, I'd like to recognize Town Administrator Nicholas Milano for us.
Mr. Chair, if you could just open the public hearing so that we would, before their presentation begins. You just have to declare that the public hearing is not open.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that on the agenda, on the public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. Thank you. Okay, Charlie.
Okay, I'll just be a quick moment here. I just have to start something up here. I haven't done it this way previously, so just be a moment. Then I want to share my slide, right? Yep, share screen right there. Uh, where is that now, right here?
Right here.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we have the ability to share our screen, or if somebody can put up the slides that we sent over.
Nicole Lynn, are you able to do that?
I can pull them up. You should have the ability to, but if not, give me a moment. I'll pull up the presentation.
Yeah, but isn't functioning on our screen. All right, no, we do, I'm sorry. All right, can you see the screen?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Inlegible for everyone?
Affirmative.
Great, okay, so I'm gonna just start on the, the second paragraph here. First thing I'm gonna say is that the changes to this year's assessed values were basically brought about by using sales from calendar year 2021. So basically, the appraisal date was 1-1-2022. In addition to that, any newly built houses, and I'll kind of follow along with my mouse here, along with renovations to existing properties, commonly known in our industry as tax growth, also would have added to the overall valuation in Milton. And right now, valuation from new growth was on the high side. It was $88 million, and that increased the tax base by $1,246,239. Property sales in general did continue to move forward and move higher as well. And the continued demand basically brought the single-family, average single-family home up about 13.5% from 824,451 to 935,875. Commercial and industrial also did see an increase, going up, commercial at 7.4% and industrial increasing at 9.2%. The estimated fiscal year 2023 maximum allowable tax levy, and for those of you that aren't familiar with the tax levy, that's the money that needs to be raised by property taxes, represents about a 3.7% increase from the prior year. With the recommended tax shift that we'll be talking about on the next slide, the average single-family tax bill would increase an estimated $388, or about 3.8%. And the residential tax rate can be reduced about 9% going from 12.47 to 11.40. And I will be talking about commercial as we get to the next slide. So here we have options, and these would include different shifts and different residential factor adjustments as well here. You'll see under option four, this would be if we just had one tax rate, and you'll see that it comes in at $11.68. In our case, we're actually, and i-if you haven't noticed, recommending option two. When I met with the board, I think the important part was, if you look down here, the average single-family tax change, along with the average commercial tax change, are pretty similar here. They're 3.8% for residential and 3.94% for commercial. So the increases in that sense are basically gonna be fairly similar. If you look down below here, last year's tax shift was 1.5. We'd be looking at a 1.56 tax shift, along with a .9765 shift for the residential. And again, what's really happening here would be that your average single-family tax bill would be about $10,669. That would be as opposed to the $10,281 from last year. And the average commercial would be $19,239, whereas it was about $18,509 last year. A little bit further down here, you'll see the average values for commercial and for a single-family, commercial being about $1,055,000, and for residential, $935,875. And for anyone that's interested, these would be residential tax rate, commercial tax rate, along with the shifts for the past 11 years of this. This would be here. And I did make a note down here because we are, you know, given the special town meeting held last night, we are still waiting for the Department of Revenue to finalize the information and accept everything that we've presented to them. Any questions at all on that?
Thank you very kindly. Let's see if we have any questions, members of the Select Board. I see none at this time. We do have a motion for this particular item. And your recommendation from the Board of Assessors?
The fourth page is the, the Board of Assessors' recommendation for the for the tax shift.
Correct.
All right.
That would be right here.
.9765 is the recommendation.
Yep, and not to adopt a residential exemption and not to adopt a small commercial exemption.
Right. Now, I think all of us have read the text. Are there any highlights within the text that you want to make? Brian or Charlie?
No, that's it.
You say four? Thank you. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
Okay, and that recommendation would be that the Town of Milton adopt a minimum residential factor of .9765, not to adopt a residential exemption, and not to adopt a small commercial exemption. Is this?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus.
Mr. Chair, I, I think, if I may, and I'm sorry, I'm a little late suggesting this. As part of the public hearing, I think you want to invite members of the public if they have any, if they have anything to offer, any questions or comments.
Thank you for that, Mr. Zulus. I had been to the attendees list and did see no hands. I do see one now, Mr. John Rowe. So we'll recognize Mr. Rowe. Mr. Rowe, are you unmuted?
Can you hear me now?
We can. And your comments, sir? Our question?
Yeah, good evening. John Rowe, 23 Parkwood Drive, Milton. Quick question. I don't understand what, why we are voting on the exclusion of a residential I don't know exactly what exemption, you know, what does that mean?
Mr. O'Shea?
So basically, a residential exemption would take up to 35% of the average single-family parcel value, and we were just talking about some of the averages here. It would take that information, and the board can say anywhere from 20 to 35% can be applied to that. Once that's applied, that amount would be taken off any property that is owner-occupied. The real problem with something like that is that it doesn't actually stop the residential parcels from having to pay their fair share. So for anybody that gets tax money off of their value, other people that might have a value that is either higher than the average value, or again, somebody that might not live in town, or that might own vacant land, et cetera, they would all see an increase in value. So basically, it's, it's not like the residential parcels are not carrying their part of the actual tax levy amount. What's happening instead is it's just being reapportioned sometimes to people that just have land or have, you know, a parcel that isn't, you know, close to the average price.
And residential exemptions are used in towns where, like, like Boston, or cities, Boston, or a lot of Cape Towns where there's a lot of rental property, and they want to give, they want to give the people who live there the residence break versus people, the landlords, absentee landlords. It doesn't really apply to, you know, Milton and the residents.
Yeah, the.
So if it doesn't apply, why are we talking about it?
That happens to just be one of the decisions that needs to be made under classification.
All right, well, from what you've told me, I disagree. I don't, you know, I don't understand it, and I don't understand why you're bringing this up to the Select Board tonight without properly informing them, informing them. without properly informing them, informing them and the citizens of what this means. Because I don't think you've explained it to me properly, and I don't think the select board understands it either. I certainly don't, and I'm not a dumb person.
And Brian? Any further comment?
Yeah, I think it was, it was brought up before the board because it's part of the public hearing on tax classifications, and it's something that needs to be voted on annually.
We vote on stuff because the, the assessor says, this is the way you do it. And then the board of select managers vote, you know, lockstep in, you know, yep. You, you, you rubber stamp it. I mean, I still don't understand what you're talking about, and I don't think it's going to help me. I assure you, it's not going to help me, right?
The, the town of Milton, again, is got a large portion of their properties that are residential. In fact, it's about ninety-six percent. Of those ninety-six percent, not many are actually rented out to other folks like might happen in the city of Boston or Cambridge where you might have students or, as was just mentioned a moment ago, places that might have people that are renting for the week down on the Cape or down on Martha's Vineyard. So it's basically a chance to allow people that live in their own home to actually get a discount on their taxes if they live in the home and they don't rent it out. And folks that do rent it out would, in fact, end up paying more taxes.
So as far as I know, I guess you can rent your house, but there's no Airbnb allowed in Milton. So I, I guess I, I still don't get it, you know? Are you, are you saying that if, if, if I rented my house, I pay a higher tax rate than if I didn't rent it?
And we're not a resident of the town.
So I didn't hear that.
And we're not a resident of the town. If you didn't live in a piece of property, you would get, you'd pay a higher tax rate under the having a residential exemption. It just, it, it, it doesn't, the model doesn't fit Milton because we don't have a high majority or a high, a high percentage of people who don't, who are absentee landlords. And that's what this, that's what this, this rewards people in, in places like Boston or like a, or resort town, if you will, that, that, that don't live there and that, that it rewards the people who do.
All right. So if the board of selectmen choose not to vote for this, what does that do for the, the citizens of Milton?
But overall, it would actually keep the tax rate lower. And it would give homeowners the opportunity to, you know, pay their fair share of tax. The other issue would be finding out who, you know, a- as was just mentioned a moment ago, people that, you know, don't own, let's say you own two properties in Milton, you could really only say that one is your homestead and therefore the other one is probably rented out. But in that case, there you'd actually be taxed more money on that property just because you don't live in it.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize a member Bradley.
Right, thank you.
Aaron? You're recognized? Your hand is raised?
Yep, sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's all right.
Doing this, I'm doing this on my phone, so I'm getting used to it all. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is, this has no impact on any of our seniors, correct? Anybody that is sixty-five and over or the benefits that they currently receive, correct?
That would be correct.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that all of our residents understood that, that this really has nothing to do with any of the senior tax credits that are happening. Because I think that part is a little bit confusing right now.
Yes, i- i- if there was a decision to introduce some sort of a residential exemption, that would just be one other thing that the seniors would have to prove when they applied for their exemptions.
Perfect. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Now I have to figure out how to mute again.
I see no other hands raised, so we'll return to the vote. We have a motion that has been seconded. The vote would be by roll call. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? We lost him. Ms. Bradley?
Um, yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. We could hear you. Thank you. You have that vote?
Could you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Not us.
There you go, Richard. You're back.
Did you, did you get my vote? Yeah, because it bumped me over to attendee again for a minute.
Okay, thank you for that.
I don't think you got mine either, Arthur.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we have unanimous vote. Aaron, your hand is still raised. Did you wish to speak again? Or is that your phone?
No, it's, I can't figure out how to get it down.
Okay.
I'm working on it, Mr. Chair.
We, we will, we transfer you from time to time to make sure that we don't miss you.
Just ignore me for right now. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zulus, we will not ignore you. Your hand is raised.
Miss, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
It is moved and seconded. We will vote by roll call. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you. And Brian and Charlie, thank you very much for being with us for the work that you continue to do and for having the information to us on a timely basis for this meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
No, we gotta go.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
At this time, we will turn to agenda item number five. And we will be joined by the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee.
Consisting of who?
I see Chris Hart to be moved up. Katie, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Chris? And to you?
Good evening, everyone.
You'll be joined by two other members, will you, Katie?
Two others, Andy, Andy Schmidt and Raj Pathak, if they're in the attendee group.
Wow, it's like deja vu, Katie.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Richard.
This is like deja vu. So I'm so used to hearing that voice the past five years.
It is. I don't see them in the attendee list. We did notify everyone, Mr. Chair, that six forty-five was the estimated time for this agenda item. It's possible that they're dialing in now or will be very shortly. One of them for a quorum of our committee.
Well, already, I should mention that agenda items ten, twenty-one, and twenty-two, as they appear on this agenda, were accomplished last night at last evening's select board meeting. We could, while we were awaiting, move a couple of agenda items. Mr. Zulus?
That, that's what I, I was just going to suggest, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Just gonna suggest some of may not require too much time. Maybe we could go to item number twelve.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, and I'd make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three common eviction license renewals for five fifty-six Adam Street LLC, DBA Nevada, B and D Ituro Inc., DBA Ituro Sushi, Caribou Coffee, DBA Brugus Bagel Bakery, Coffee Break Cafe Inc., Ho Jam Inc., DBA Mr. Chance, Mitt Dunn LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, Milton Fuller House Corp., DBA Fuller Village at two locations, Milton Opus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye Restaurant, Newcomb Farms, Peel Pizza, PB Milton LLC, DBA Player Bowls, Reviving Company, Starbucks Coffee Number Seven, Five, Six, Five, Stella's Luncheonette, Stevie's, The Plate at Milton Marketplace, Waltz Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, Eighty-Eight Wath Hospitality LLC, DBA Madre Asteria.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second to the motion, item number twelve?
Second.
Second now.
Thank you very much. There's a tie between Ms. Musto and Mr. Zulus, so we'll
I'll concede, I'll concede.
She earned it. She hiked it today. Mike, a little bit longer. I know you had a deep other business. Roxanne will turn to you later on in the agenda for a couple of comments on today's sidebar. So we have a, a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes.
Mr. Chair, we have time. I'll do thirteen. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three local license renewals for American leads of post one-one-four, Milton Golf Club, NPP Inc., DBA Central Avicar Mart, Delaney Liquors Inc., DBA East Milton Wine and Spirits Incorporated, Craft and Crew, The Fruit Center Incorporated, Milton Fuller Housing Corporation at two locations, Eighty-Eight Wath Hospitality LLC, DBA Madre Asteria, Waltz Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, Milton Opus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye, Ho Jam Inc., DBA Mr. Chance, five fifty-six Adam Street, LLC, DBA Nevada, Lombardi Enterprises LLC, DBA The Plate at Milton Marketplace, B and D Ituro Inc., DBA Ituro Sushi.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Would you like to second, Mr. Zulus?
It, it would, it would complete me if I was able to second this motion. I will second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. So you went to item number fourteen, Mr. Wells, would you?
Go ahead, Al. Twenty-twenty-three Sunday opening permits for Delaney Liquors Incorporated, DBA East Milton Wine and Spirits Incorporated, Craft and Crew, NPP Incorporated, DBA Central Avicar Mart, The Fruit Center Incorporated, and that's for approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Second place. Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
And, and just to, as a friendly amendment, we'll just, if we could just say, between the hours of ten AM and six PM.
That's fine. I just, I'm reading off the agenda, sorry, Mike, I'll accept that.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number fifteen on the agenda?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three entertainment licenses for Milton Opus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye, Waltz Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, Wath Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Madre Asteria, five fifty-six Adam Street LLC, DBA Nevada, Ho Jam Inc., DPA, Mr. Chance.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Oh, second now.
It's moved to the seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And the final?
Chair, I'll make approval, I'll make an approval, a motion approved, one day local license shop the queue, Fruit Center Holiday Stroll to be held December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two from six PM to eight PM.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Second place. Ms. Musto, the seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley? Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, so we'll go back to Ms. Bradley. Are you there?
She has dropped off. I'll let you know when she rejoins.
Okay, thank you. So we have four votes as passed. And Richard, thank you for doing all of this work for us. We appreciate it.
Got a half a page, five minutes. Yeah, that's pretty good for us.
And now let us return to agenda item number five, to our colleague and past chair of the select board and current chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, Katie Conlon. Katie, could you introduce the members of your committee who are with you? And then we'll do an introduction of the select board members, just to make sure that everybody knows everyone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I see that we're joined now by Raj Pathak. I don't see Andy Schmidt in the attendee group, but we'll keep our eye out for him. So my name is Katie Conlon. I'm the chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, and we have two of our members. If they'd like to introduce themselves, we have Chris Hart and Raj Pathak. Chris, do you want to speak first?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Chris Hart, and I'm a member of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. Good to see you all.
And Raj, welcome to the, to the committee and to the board's meeting. This is an interesting way to start as a new member of the committee, and we're thankful to have you here this evening.
Thanks, Katie. Good to see you all. I know a few people, Mike, from the days back of the warrant committee, and Arthur, I've known for a lo- a long time, so I look forward to being on the committee. Appreciate the opportunity.
Well, great, and welcome all of you to this meeting. Thank you for being with us. At this time, members of the select board, Mr. Zulus? Just so that everybody
Yep.
I know you, but
No, no, absolutely. No, absolutely. Mike Zulus, vice chair.
Mr. Wells?
Richard Wells, secretary. Hi, Katie, welcome back.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Yep. Hi, Mr. Chair and everybody else. It's Aaron Bradley. I'm a member.
Roxanne?
Hi, hi, my name is Roxanne Musto. I'm a member.
And Arthur Doyle, this is your chair. And Katie, did you want to call your meeting to order at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee will call our meeting to order. And as the select board is, we are meeting remotely pursuant to Governor Baker's order of July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which extended the expiration of provisions relating to the open meeting law to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. So all votes by the airplane committee will need to be taken by roll call. And we are appointed by the select board. We are an advisory committee to the board on the issues of airplane noise and pollution. We've made our introductions, and we're here, we're happy to join you this evening, and thank you for having us.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Sean Doyle of Milton Access TV if he would outline the protocol that we will follow. And going into executive session beforehand, I'll just mention that following Sean's outline of the technology, the select board will move to executive session. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee will move to executive session. And then we will leave this platform and go to the other meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so since both meetings are occurring using the Zoom hosting technology, what you'll do is you'll leave this meeting and then use the assigned link. I assume that the other Zoom meeting has an ID link provided to you. You'll join in there. Once you're done with the executive session happenings, whatever you're talking about, you'll leave that meeting and then rejoin via the link, either the one, the private one you do, you, you've been provided or the one publicly available online.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay.
At this time, I will read the motion on behalf of the select board to go into executive session. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to litigation filed by the Town of Milton versus the Federal Aviation Administration, number twenty-two dash one fifty-two, U.S. Court of Appeals, First Circuit. Based on my belief, the discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. The Select Board will return to open session following executive session. At this time, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. And Chair, I turn to you.
All right, and I will move as Chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee that the committee enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to litigation filed by the Town of Milton against the Federal Aviation Administration, case number twenty-two dash one five two one, pending in the U.S. Court of Appeals for the First Circuit. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee would not be returning to open session. We would be adjourning from the executive session because we have no other agenda items on our meeting this evening, unlike the Select Board. So do we have a second to that motion by a member of the committee? Okay, seconded by Mr. Hart. So we'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Pathak?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you all.
Conlon, Mr. Schmidt just joined, so I can have him join if you wanna have him join the meeting and then participate in a roll call to go to executive session. So you should be joining right now.
Okay. Andy, welcome, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. So our committee, the Select Board has just voted to go into executive session, the committee has just voted to go into executive session, and Mr. Milano spotted you in the attendee group, and we wanted to bring you over as a panelist. And Mr. Milano, yes, we should revoke, I wish if I heard you correctly.
Yeah, I would offer Mr. Schmidt the opportunity to vote on that motion, if you would like.
And, okay, so I guess I should read the motion again. So Andy, the motion was that the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to litigation filed by the Town of Milton versus the Federal Aviation Administration, case number twenty-two dash one five two one, pending in the U.S. Court of Appeals, First Circuit, leaving that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board, as supported by the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee as an advisor to the Select Board. And we will be adjourning from the executive session and not returning as a committee to open session.
Okay.
And that was seconded by Chris Hart. When we just.
And I'm in favor, yes.
And you voted yes, Andy?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I think that's adequate, we've all voted.
And at this point in time, we're ready to leave this meeting and to go to the executive session meeting. And again, thanks to Sean for outlining the protocols for us.
Thank you, Sean, and we are all back in public session. Turning to the next agenda item, which is item number six. Discussion approval youth task force charge. Everybody has received copy of the charge. As background would indicate that this refreshed charge that was put forward was the product of contributions from myself, Mike, Nick. It is the work product from that effect. And of course, over time, based upon his experience, like any mission statement or a charge, it can be refreshed in the future. At this time, I would, considering all of the work and deliberations that have gone into this during the course of the past couple of months, actually, move to approve the refresh charge for the task forces presented. Is there a second? Aaron, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to second it. I actually have a few things that I'd like to talk about with this.
That's fine.
Okay, great. Do you want me to do that now, or should we wait for the second?
We should wait for the second and then have discussion.
I'll, I'll, I'll second for the discussion.
Thank you. So there's movement seconded, and Aaron, you had asked first, so please proceed.
Thank you so much.
We, we, I just want to say at the outset, we've had a lot of time on this, so the chair is going to limit discussion.
That's fine. The chair can limit discussion. I just have two quick points.
That's good.
I would like to add a select board member to the membership of this task force. I feel like it is something that two members of the select board currently are invested in. And I believe that it needs that level of having a direct connection to the select board. So I would like to add that as a friendly amendment. Knowing that there's two of us that are willing to serve off the top of our heads. Many of us have served on committees that we did not institute, but were required to be a part of because of past charges. So I would ask that. The second one I would ask is that we change it from the Board of Health to the, hold on, let me look at this, to the Health Department. When you look at the other departments that are listed in here, it does not say the boards. It just says the departments. And so I would like to change that specifically so that it's the Health Department and not the Board of Health.
Yeah, you offering those as friendly amendments?
I am, Mr. Chair, and that's it. I have nothing else to say.
Okay, it has moved, been moved for amendment. Is there a second to the proposed amendments?
Oh, I, I, I think, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think since they're friendly amendments, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. We asking for them one at a time?
No, I, I was just gonna say, since they're friendly amendments, if you accept them, there's no need for motion. If you'll accept, if you accept the, and then the second, who's me, accepts the friendly amendment, then that's the, that'll be.
That'll be fine. Okay. So we have a motion that is duly made and seconded. Do you have any further discussion?
I'm gonna comment, Mr. Chair.
Please, Mr. Wells.
As you know, I think I've been pretty strong about this. And let me be very clear one more time in saying that. I think I've, I know I've given all my professional life to this community. The protection of it, especially protection of our youth. And no respect to my colleague, Ms. Bradley, she's never been involved in some of the projects or some of the hardships. I have the relationships that I've had with so many who are involved. We've got a committee listed that no one could any of, except maybe the exception of me, has talked with any of the prior members or any of the practitioners. There are some wonderful people that do extraordinary work for young people in this community. And there's also been a perception out there in the past few weeks that both some members of the select board are trying to deprive the youth of this town. Mission of the task force was to identify staff and open a youth center for the middle-aged students of this town. The reason was, it was initially in the initial scope was for high school and middle school, but in, in the investigation and the research, I went, it was clear from the experts that this is really something for the middle school kids and high school kids are beyond having a core. Being the father of a teenager just finishing high school, I understand that, especially as you get into the middle, lady is high school. Adulthood, young adulthood comes on very fast. Well, I'm really bothered by some of the letters I've written, some of the comments I've, I've heard. And the, and the fact that we have been absent as a board, and especially, and I've said this repeatedly, and Ms. Milano, if you'd worked on this, I don't know why you wouldn't have talked to your subject matter experts, your SROs, your school people, some of your coaches. We have some, as I said, some brilliant people that have done yeoman's work to shape young men and continue to shape the young men and women of this community. Everyone from a current law committee chair, Mr. Humphries, Steve Murphy, the fire chief of Hingham, Paul D'Amato, Kevin Crisom, all the staff at Park and Rec, the schools, the guidance councils, all the coaches, girls' softball, boys' baseball, soccer, Jamie LaVash, all of them, clubs, the library, the staff at the library, all of them. And yet, no one wanted to talk to them. I've got letters and emails and this and that and the other, and I just leave you with this final comment because I am going to vote no on this, Mr. Chair. I'm not voting no on this in any way, shape, or form to deprive kids of this town or anything. I'm, I'm voting no on the way this has been done. And I leave you with a text that was sent to me. I'm not going to identify the author of the text. It was forwarded to me with a copy of the Town and Milton, the select board's application that we use for applying to volunteer positions in town. Since the question of bringing back the youth task forces before the select board this week, again, 12-6. This is the only board committee that has permanent youth members. Absolutely false. I just added the absolute false. The constitution and charge looks like will be modified a bit, but the task force will be looking for members who are capital teenagers, parents of teenagers, and people who have youth programming experience. This is a great way to have these voices heard on the town side of things. Please, please, please volunteer to be on the youth task force or think of someone who might be interested. Filling out the form before Tuesday's meeting will show to the select board members who have been against this that there is interest. You can also speak in favor of public comments. Express the interest by filling out the volunteer. Mr. Chair, no disrespect to you. I didn't get the charge. I don't even know there was a new charge, and I didn't know we were creating a new charge. But, as I just stated, not one person, not one coach, not one teacher, not one mental health worker, not one town employee who's charged with the protection and upbringing and shaping of kids in this town who give their whole heart and soul every single day has asked a single comment. Not one. So that's why, Mr. Chair, I'm voting no. Voting no because of the process. This is a community of all of us. Everyone. Not one person who's looking for something. Not one person who's trying to get all their friends to write for them or to advocate for them for a reason. They suggest to anyone in this town, go spend some time with people that I just named, and that's just a scintilla of what I see going on in this town each and every day on behalf of our kids. And the partnership that they have with our kids. So that's why I'm voting no, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. And Ms. Bradley?
Yes, since, since Mr. Wells said that this was me, I didn't write this charge. I didn't change the membership of this charge. I had nothing to do with this. In fact, I emailed Lynn earlier today to ask her to see the charge. And she informed me, Mr. Wells, that it came out last week when she sent us the entire agenda. Because I too missed it. So before we go saying that there's a conspiracy and there's friends and there's all these things, there's some facts. The facts are, I had nothing to do with the charge. I had nothing to do with it.
I didn't say you did. I didn't say that you did.
The charge, and the charge was given to us as select board members, which by the way, Mr. Chair, I, I just wanna side note this for a second. We changed the name of the select board many, many years ago. And as our town members get used to that, I would implore you to correct people as they continue to call us select men. Because I'm not a select man. I'm a select board member. And so please reiterate that as we continue through this process of people getting to know the new way that we're calling ourselves. Lynn did her job. Nick did his job. And they got us what you intended them to get us. I'm totally in favor of it. Nobody said that we weren't talking to people. Nobody said that we weren't scintillating anything. What we're saying is that people in the town want this. And so, Mr. Chair, I appreciate you taking it upon yourself and, and others to create a new charge, to expand it, to hear the voices that came out in our last meeting, Mr. Wells. I'm sorry, are you watching telly? The, our last meeting, where we discussed this at length, and it was brought to the chair's attention that there should be some changes, and the chair took that seriously. And so he brought this back to us, and I support that 100%. And I appreciate and applaud the work that Mr. Milano, that Ms. Donopoli and Mr. Doyle have done on this charge. So thank you.
You're welcome. And I would just add that if there are instances where select board is not used where it should be used, please let me know if I miss it. Ms. Musto, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want a few minutes to, for putting some comments in about this. First of all, I'm sort of concerned here about the process that we're engaged in to get to this point. We have a committee, let's remind people, that didn't meet for two years, met for 30 meetings. We have no posted minutes as of today on that website. My understanding is that this committee is supposed to report yearly back to the select board on what's been going on. So I wanted to see what the committee was, was doing, and to do that, you have to read the minutes of the meetings. And if we don't have minutes, it's hard for me to discern what actually happened with this committee. Any inclination or assumption that I don't care about the youth or, or anything like that is wrong. I care about the youth in this town. And if you look at my record of all the accomplishments I have done in this town with regards to youth, all the time I volunteered and done things in, with my kids when they were younger and supportive of all of these things in town, I think my record speaks for itself. As far as it goes with this committee, we are so fortunate in this town that we have so many opportunities for young people to be involved. We have student government, we have clubs, we have a Parks and Rec department, we have a library, we have schools, we have a new social worker at the Board of Health, who I know she's been making the rounds to all of the departments and the schools included. And we have student government. We have a lot of opportunities for the kids. And we have a lot of great programming and a lot of opportunities. I think that we need to take a step back here and really, you know, Erin and I are tasked with this subcommittee to look at the committees we have. We have over 90 committees. You're asking us to put a new charge on a committee that I don't even have the information to refer to, to exactly what they did. And at the time when the kids needed them most, they didn't meet. It's hard for me to justify a committee for that. And again, I think that we have lots of opportunities for these kids for their voice. They could come to select board, they can go to citizen speak, they can go to school committee things. And another way to do this would have been, if we really wanted to do this, is to have something that's not necessarily a town committee, but you have the department heads meet to see what, to tell, like a five-minute, 10-minute, half-hour check-in, you know, once a month or once every other month, what they're seeing. And if we are seeing trends or things that are issues or things like that, they could always have a forum where they have parents and they have students that want to be there. You know, we have a lot of resources in this town. We have a lot of people that are working in the town departments that do things day in and day out with the kids. Again, we have a social worker, the police department, I believe, does as well. You have adjustment councils at the high school. So there are a lot of opportunities. So based on that, with good conscience, I cannot support this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further comments? For the discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Just a question, Mr. Chair. Did you accept the friendly amendments?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you. And I, as a second, I accept, accept them.
In doing so, I want to point out to a couple of things. My issue was not with the committee, it was always with the charge. And the second point is that we have a lot of business in this town to attend to, and it's going to require select board member power engagement. We have economic development, we've talked about strategic planning, we have charter review and so on down the line. And those are going to require all of us working together and spending time on those. So keep that in mind. I found a difficulty with the previous charge in having both a member of the select board and the town administrator on it. That is inordinate in my estimation, and the town administrator will not be on it. The town administrator is the town administrator and should be doing town administration, not serving on committees of the select board. I recognize also that we have a preponderance of committees and that we have a needed review. In fact, I asked at one point, Tom, if we're gonna have an update on the work that Roxanne and Aaron are doing. I don't need any answer on this for the December 20th agenda. And hopefully that will be the case. The span of control is very great. The accountability is an issue. I think the reporting mandates are an issue and so on down the line. And I hope that the wording in this refresh charge is a reflection of the fact that we can take a new approach and indeed take a look at whether or not charges to other committees that are going to continue need to be refreshed. That's the only thing that I have to say on this at the present time. I respect everybody's comments on this during the course of the time in which we have been engaged on the subject. Ms. Bradley, did you have another comment that you wish to make?
I, real quick, Mr. Chair, out of the 90 committees, there's about a third, if not more, that are required by state law or town by law. So it's not 90 that are just out there committees. There are 90 committees, yes. But at least a third of them are required by state statute or town by law.
And that's the type of clarification and updating that we'd want to have at your report. Okay, Ms. Musto, last comment.
Sure. And the other thing with, to go on with Erin's point, that is true. And I would also mention that most towns have about 25 committees. So we are well over that number.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so no further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Are you frozen, is it? Looks for, I'm sorry. You're muted.
No.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Item number seven. A discussion approval stormwater fees. Nick, can we turn to you on this, please?
Sure. CPW Director Chase Berkeley is in the attendees pool and will be joining us momentarily to discuss the stormwater rates for fiscal year 2023.
And we have had those presented to us. Welcome, Chase.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good to see you twice in one day.
Same here. I didn't realize I still had that background on too. That's leftover from the Mastodot meeting, so it's fitting. So I, I believe you received a short PowerPoint presentation that has the facts and figures for our rate recommendation for this year. So it's a pretty modest increase fiscal year, 22 to 23 of just over $5,000. So as a reminder, the stormwater rate is a linear one that's applied to all properties in town that are privately owned. And actually, the publicly owned properties too, the town actually pays itself stormwater bills. So all properties pay a stormwater bill. The majority of them being residential, single-family homes are grouped into tiers to simplify that cost structure. And so in the PowerPoint you have, we're, we're increasing the rate from $2.35 per 100 square feet to $2.38 per 100 square feet, who are requesting that increase to make up that additional $5,000. That, that cost is, is the exact amount of the appropriation for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. So it's a zero, zero-sum balance that the rate is based on. We essentially just divide the budget by the amount of impervious surface in the town and apply that to all properties. So it's proportioned by how much impervious surface is on a property. And all towns, even tax exempt, pay this fee as, because it is a utility bill and not a tax. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions you have or anything else you'd like to discuss.
Any questions for Mr. Berkeley, for members of the board, please? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I just wanted to understand, Chase, if you could say for people that might be watching, has, can you just explain if the rates for them have gone up or the rate staying the same according to the tiers as they were last time? Just so that the general audience knows.
Yep. So, so the rate's increasing and by the amount per tier is actually varies because there's a little bit of rounding going on. So essentially for a tier one price, the, the rate is not going to increase. It'll be $41. Again, as it was last year, but at our top tier, which was $528, that will be $5 more this year at $533. So again, pretty modest increase, about 1.2% overall. Any property that isn't a single-family home gets billed on their actual square footage and they, they receive a unique bill. It's just the single-family residential homes that get these tiered rates.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, you need a motion?
I do, and there is one for us. Mr. Wells, would you be willing to present it?
I don't think I have it.
I'll wait it for you.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion if you'll, if you'll read it, Mr. Chair.
I'll be happy to move to approve the fiscal year 22 stormwater rates for the town of Milton, Massachusetts, as proposed by the Department of Public Works. So it's made, is it seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you, Oxan. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you.
Just a point, Mr. Chair, before Chase leaves us, I just want to thank him publicly for, I know it's been a tough two weeks, especially with leave pickup, but I get, I get the operational restrictions that he's under here, the difficulties. But I want to thank his staff as well as Huntree and I mean, often the city of Boston as well, and their nursery for donating that beautiful tree and getting that coordinated and put up in the square. It wasn't an easy thing to do, but for the numbers of people that were there Sunday, they clearly appreciate it. So thank you, Chef, Chase, Tommy, all the staff, everybody who did it.
And that's exactly the next item on the agenda. And Chase will turn to you for an update, if you would, on the yard waste collection services.
Sure. Thanks again, Mr. Chair, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So we're sitting here on December 6th in pretty good shape with regards to yard waste collection in town. That not being the case three weeks ago, we saw a significant backlog in the collection. So I have here tonight, joining me, Mr. Patsy Spaduto, who is the owner of Boston Carding, our holiday vendor, who's, who's here to help talk through what's going on in the industry and, and explain some of the idiosyncrasies and some of the complicating factors. But no doubt, weather was certainly one of them this year. So if you recall, the weekend of November 5th and 6th, we had two 70-degree days coming off of two weeks of no yard waste collection. And residents put out an enormous volume that following week. And that had pretty much a domino effect through the month of November in backlog that collection. So we're still waiting for some of the numbers to come in on how much volume we collected, but no doubt, observation-wise, there was a lot of material out on the streets and it took some time to catch up to all of it. So I appreciate all the residents' patience in, in waiting and, and putting up with the material on the street. It, it's one thing we know in public works is that we touch people on a very personal level, especially when it comes to collecting trash, recycling, yard waste and material from in front of your home. And people have a tendency to set their watch to the mailman and the trash truck. And when they don't show up on time, we, we hear about it right away. And we're very sensitive to that. So I want you to know, there's a lot, a lot of work done behind the scenes. And the contractor, at his own cost, put a lot of resources in to try to catch up. So that is appreciated very much so. So I'll give him an opportunity just to speak, to clarify anything that you may want to have, ask questions on. Or I, I think it is helpful to hear a little bit about what's going on in the solid waste industry on a macro scale because we are not unique with this issue here in Milton, Massachusetts or, or in the United States.
We appreciate that background, Mr. Berkeley, and thank you, Mrs. Spaduto, for being with us. The floor is yours, sir. You, you're muted.
I should be all set now. Thank you. And I do want to apologize for, you know, the backlog of service that we saw this year. It was a, it was a strange year, obviously, as Chase was saying early on, where it seems to be that it got cold. And we had two 70-degree, you know, days and everyone cleaned up their yards and we had this immense amount of backlog of yard waste out there. You know, the challenges in the industry today are, you know, trucks and labor. You know, post-pandemic, a lot of the manufacturers stopped producing trucks. And most, most of the manufacturers stopped producing rear-load collection vehicles. So today, you couldn't go out and find a rental truck or a rear-load collection truck, like an old-fashioned garbage truck, because they're not available. We still have ours available for yard waste collection. We had a, we had a certain amount set aside for yard waste and a certain number of men. And as you know, labor is also tight. So we, we put those trucks out there to work with the backlog. Trucks started breaking down, they're older trucks, there's no parts out there, there's no rental trucks. And, you know, we really got pushed during that, that first couple of weeks. What I did to get caught up was I took resources from other divisions, sent them into town, and I got us cleaned up. It took us a couple of weeks to do, but, but we, we got there. As far as the industry concerned, as Chase was saying, you know, most of the towns in Massachusetts are not only behind on their yard waste collection, but the trash and recycling collection is, is a real big problem. If you Google like Republic Services Boston, they had issues in Lawrence, they had issues in North Andover, they had issues in Reading, they had issues in North Reading. Other contractors have issues such as like in Everett, the city of Boston. They're falling behind on trash collection and recycling, not just yard waste. So we've done a, we've done a really good job keeping up with the, the trash and the yard weight and, and the recycling. The yard waste is a real big challenge when it all dropping really early in the season. And the post-collection site where we're dropping the material off is also closing early. It used to close at 4:30 and now they're closing at 3:30. And that really changes that how, you know, how many loads we can bring there over the course of the day. And at the end of the day, we're stuck with full trucks and we have to go dump them in the morning. It really slowed down the process for us this year. I, I got a better game plan for next year. We won't have it happen again. But that, you know, I just wanted to come on and explain and let you all know that, you know, we're, we're, we're definitely in tune to what happened and it won't happen again.
Thank you very kindly. We appreciate your willingness to be here with us this evening. I apologize at the expense of my throat. I picked up a little bit of a bug. I've been sharing with Mike Zulus during the course of the past week. Both victims of a virus, but nowly. But again, you're very gracious, both of you, to be here this evening on this topic. We know a lot of people in town are most interested in what was going on. And you both provided a good clarification. I'd like to go to Ms. Bradley, who's had her hand up first, and then Mr. Wells. He'll be recognized immediately thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I hope I don't say this wrong, but, Mr. Spaduto, you have done a great job. I've heard no complaints from my neighbors because we all understand that we're in this together. And, and that this is such a first-world problem. I'm reminded about what Mr. Wells said at the beginning of the meeting when he talked about those that were in need and what that looked like and how we all needed to extend a hand and extend a piece of ourselves during this time for our fellow neighbors. And I just want to say, I've had no bad luck with your services, nor have my neighbors in my precinct. I've heard nothing at all, except for praises of how your guys are out there on Saturdays in 90-degree heat picking up the trash. So I appreciate you even coming here this evening. I'm sorry you had to come here this evening and have this conversation. Because a few, few folks in our town are upset that their leaves weren't picked up in a timely fashion. I think that that's very telling for, for what it is that our season that we are upon has to say. And, and maybe every complaint should come with an air fryer. I don't know. Mr. Wells, what do you think about that? We just put an air fryer in with everyone. Anyway, I just want to say, you've done a great job and I appreciate it. And I applaud all that your men have done, single-handedly on the Saturdays when it was scorching heat. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you're recognized, sir.
So Chase, as you know, we talk almost every day about this. So, and I'm glad you brought this up because I don't think, two things that people didn't understand is, I, I was aware that you had the 3:30 timeframe, which really made it difficult. And the types of trucks that you're using. But my question, Chase, is do we have one week, maybe for everyone would appreciate, because as you know, you're working backwards the past two weeks to try and catch up. So where are we now? Normally, if I'm correct, doesn't disposal, leave pickup, end the first week of December?
Yeah, so, so, but based on the calendar, this is the last scheduled week that's advertised on the calendar, with the exception of the holiday tree pickup, which is first or second week in January. Contractually, we are able to add in weeks. We have a, a price per week that we can add additional yard waste collection. So we can talk through if it's necessary based on how we see things at the end of this week.
That, that's the one thing I think. That's my only one question. I think that's probably a prudent thing for you to do, just based on all the all of the calamities that have gone on with this, this year. I just, I think maybe that might be so, maybe hopefully you don't have to do it. It might be probably smart to have an arrator to be prepared in case you do have to do it.
Absolutely, yeah. And the plan is to get everything off the curb and go till that point, you know, through this last week. So, and, and we, we are looking pretty good as of today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both.
I think you both did an excellent job in enumerating the conditions behind the scenes, behind the curtain that the general public can't see. And, and maybe there's a way of our communicating that so people can have a friendly understanding of the very difficult situation with which you have faced this year with yard waste. So thank you both again, and have an enjoyable evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a quick plug, if residents want to sign up for our alert system, we do push out alerts through our mobile app and through the town's website and Facebook page so that they can be notified when there's any disruption to service or any changes in the schedule.
And Twitter.
Yes, yes.
I get it on the twits.
Good reminders.
Good night, Chase.
Thanks very much, everyone.
Let's turn now to agenda item number nine, discussion approval request for proposals for the Kidder Branch Library. And we had background materials in the materials on this. At this time, I'd like to turn to Town Administrator Milano.
All right, I apologize for the five-day-old in the background. A little upset at the moment. Yeah, so we had discussed about reissuing this RFP because it had been issued back in January of '21. Proposals were, or proposal was received but not acted upon. And in order to act on any potential proposals, it was advised from town council that we reissue the RFP. We have provided in the packet the RFP that was issued two years ago, or nearly two years ago. We haven't changed anything. We've changed some administrative materials. And, but we've left the evaluation criteria in there and everything else. So if there are changes that board members would like to see, please let me know. Otherwise, with your approval, we could reissue this request for proposals for the Kidder Branch Library.
Any questions of Mr. Milano? Is there a motion then to approve the request for proposals for the Kidder Branch Library?
Mr. Chair, I think Oxan is there, Ms. Musto is there.
I, thank you, Oxan. Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you. I don't have a question right now. I just wanted to state that I have filed a form because disclosure form with the town clerk, as my son is a library trustee. So I just wanted to make that public and please put that in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you be voting on this? I just wanted to check. Would the disclosure form filed now? Would you be, would you be voting, abstaining?
It was for any, it was for any these vote lease or anything like that.
So you have the flexibility. Great. Okay, Richard?
I make a motion to reissue the RFP for Kidder Branch Library.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Move to second. And seeing no discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Well, at this time, go to agenda item number 11. Discussion approval, February special town meeting, date timeline and warrant articles. Warrant articles to change the town treasurer collective position from elected to appointed. Mr. Milano, can we turn to you? We do not have, to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Freitag with us.
No. So just for background, we had discussed this potential warrant article at our previous select board meeting on November 15th. As you may know, in 2018, the town, a town meeting did vote to change this position from elected to appointed. So one thing that we were chasing down on our end was whether town meeting did need to vote again or whether this question could be placed immediately indirectly on the ballot. Town Council Kevin Freitag has been in touch with the Secretary of the Commonwealth Office and was chasing them for any guidance and an official answer to provide that to the board. I had spoken to him last night after the town meeting. He had not heard anything. And I did not get an answer from him today on it. So we don't have an answer on that specific question. So if the answer and feedback from the state is that the town does need to vote again, since that vote occurred more than almost four years ago, we were double-checking the math on the timeline. So under the state law, if, if a town is going to consider changing its treasurer position from elected to appointed, So under the state law, if, if a town is going to consider changing its treasurer position from elected to appointed, it needs to do to, do a two-step process, the first of which is the town meeting vote, the second of which is a town election ballot vote. That town meeting vote, under the state law, under the statute, must happen sixty days prior to the date of the annual town election, where this question is on the ballot. Unfortunately, with the date that was selected for the February Special Town Meeting falling on February twenty-seventh, that is fifty-seven days before the annual town election, which would not lend itself to being compliant with that process. So there are two kind of outstanding questions. The first of which obviously is Town Council's feedback on whether this does need to go to town meeting in the first place. And then, secondly, if the board was inclined to support a warrant article, as I had stated in November at our prior meeting, the February twenty-seventh date would not work. And if there is any consideration or interest in changing that date. I will tell you, I have not had the opportunity to speak to the moderator, the Warrant Committee Chair, Sean O'Rourke, who's been working, as we all know, on the school building project, which was the intention for the, the February town meeting in the first place. Just been a busy few days, I apologize for not having been able to check that off the list. But we have it on the agenda, so I figured we could have a conversation if the board was amenable and had any feedback or thoughts on it. And with that, Mr. Chair, I think that's a kind of a summary of where things stand today.
Thank you very much, any questions, Mr. Milano? Any comments? Mr. Zulus?
So, a, a question for Nick, what would the alternative date be? If we, if, 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 if number one, we do need to have Town Meeting Act? And number two, we wanted to take the opportunity to do it this April? When would we have a town meeting? What, what would, and is that doable, do you think?
So, we were in touch with the school department today about the autumn term, making sure the space is available, so we would have some flexibility. You know, the week immediately prior to when we're scheduled to have the meeting is, is school vacation week. So we intentionally avoided that week when selecting the twenty-seventh in the first place. If we go to the week prior to that, state of the traditional Monday night, that would land us on Monday, February thirteenth. For us to have the warrant posted in, in mailboxes, that's required fourteen days prior to that date, that would bring us to getting it posted in households, you know, Friday, January twenty-seventh, to be safe, which would mean we'd have to have it printed by, you know, January eighteenth, January twentieth, January twenty-first. So the Warrant Committee would need to receive the articles, obviously, several weeks beforehand, have the opportunity to discuss and provide feedback and finalize the warrant ahead of that January eighteenth to twentieth deadline. So it shrinks, we had intentionally, originally anticipated getting that warrant to the printer on January thirtieth, so that loses about ten days, ten to eleven, ten to twelve days, from what we would have had otherwise. And we haven't received any other warrant articles, we haven't received a warrant article yet from the School Building Committee, obviously. We could, if the warrant, if the Select Board was able to transmit any articles earlier, would be better for the Warrant Committee, but we just know with the holiday season, it's tricky, so that's kind of where things stand in terms of timeline.
Thank you. So we can defer this to the meeting on the twentieth?
Yeah, I mean, I, we would, the board couldn't vote tonight anyway, with the way, I don't believe the warrant is listed, or that would give us some time to have conversations with the folks that I mentioned earlier.
Exactly, we need that time, and recognizing that will be, you're on that on a very tight timetable, but it's a workable timetable, we've been down this road before. Thank you, Ms. Bradley, your hand is raised?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would just like to remind the Select Board that we put off the light ordinance change that I would like, that we reconvene upon with the help from Kevin, our Town Council, so something that we can take up for the February town meeting.
Who gives, get us updated from him on the work that he's been doing on that as well? Item number twelve has been taken care of, item number thirteen, item number fourteen. I have a number fifteen, and a number sixteen. Go to item number seventeen for the Town Administrators Report, and Mr. Milano, can we turn to you again?
Sure. We are having the third part in our Conflict of Interest, the Ethics Education Seminar Series, coming up on Tuesday, December thirteenth at seven PM at the Milton Public Library. And as you can audibly hear, my wife gave birth on Friday morning to a healthy baby boy, Andrew Gabriel, and having some dinner, late dinner, and so my family and I have been tied up with that for the last few days. But appreciate your support, and all the town employees in Milton have been so gracious and supportive of me these last few days, so we're very happy, and thank you.
Well, congratulations on behalf of all of us to you and your wife and to Andrew Gabriel.
He sounds so healthy.
Good lines.
He does, he, he sounds perfect, I'm so excited to meet him, congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll turn to the Chair's report, I would just mention that today, several of us participated in the deposit River Greenway to Blue Hills sidewalk in listening session. It was a, a two-hour program. It was very well done, Roxanne lives in that neighborhood in question, and I was wondering, Roxanne, if you'd be willing to share a few comments about what occurred today, not what might be discussed down the line, so that we don't run into any conflicts there.
Sure, I mean, a bunch of us went, there are a bunch of legislators that went from Boston, as well as from Milton, and so it was very well-attended, some neighborhood leaders, things like that. And it was a walking tour, basically, from Walcott Square down near Paul's Bridge, and a lot of discussion around this feasibility study that they're working on with regards to a multi-use path. And they're planning eventually to have a meeting in person, it sounds like. And that was, you know, they have no decisions really on anything quite yet, but that was what they were talking about.
I'll just go through the objectives of this project, enhanced community connectivity, improved access to recreation and healthy living for all, safety and convenience. And boy, did we have some discussions on safety and convenience today. Preservation of natural resources, also a topic of considerable interest. Protection of historic and archaeological areas, climate resiliency, and straightforward implementation and maintenance. So thank you for your comments, and Ms. Musto. This day, in one way or another, for all of us, and Mr. Zulus was on much of that sidewalk as well, and the legislators who attended were Representative Driscoll and Senator Timmeltie from Milton, and City Councilor Consular from Boston, representatives from the Pontiff River Association and many other organizations and agencies, neighborhood organizations, and both Milton and in Boston, Hyde Park, Redville. So this, this is something that's top of mind for a lot of people.
This was a deep, Mr. Chair, this was a deep C S, right? Yes, because this has been on there, this has been on their long-range forecast for many years, the difficulties have been planning a route to get there, how they get there, because, as you know, the goal was to get to Hope, to be able to get to Hope's Pond eventually.
The, if I heard correctly, two million dollars has been earmarked for this, and they are just now waiting for the release of that money to finish the public hearing process and then get into the next stage of the planning.
Two million for the planning and the design, not, not two million?
Correct.
Yeah, for planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Future meeting dates, December twentieth, which was cited earlier?
So, Mr. Chair, just a point of order, would it be possible, you know, Tuesdays have been difficult, would it be possible on the twentieth, if we should move to Wednesday, the twenty-first, I don't know? School was ended for the semester on that. If not, I would try.
Ms. Bradley, is the twenty-first workable for you, and Mr. Milano, would that work for, for you?
I'm ready.
I think so, hold on one second, I think my last final is the thirteenth. It is, wait, yep, I can do the twenty-first, I can't wait to see you, Richard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nick, okay with you?
Yeah, thank you.
And Tuesday, January third? And on the tenth of January, there will be a meeting of the Governor's Stotan Trustees? And on January seventeenth, a Select Board meeting?
Mr. Chair, if, if Mr. Wells needs to change the third, I can do that as well.
I think I'm okay on the third, it's just the third, the third Tuesday is the toughest, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just on the third with the Governor Stotan. And I know you're aware of this, and Mr. Milano is, I do believe it might be prudent for a presentation or discussion, what do you think, Nick, on that? On having perhaps the Milton Annual League come before us on that, on that night?
Yeah, I mean, I think you and Arthur and I could probably have a conversation about how to, how to map that out and bring that to the rest of the trustees.
Okay.
As a discussion point.
Okay.
Number twenty-one was accomplished last night, this was number twenty-two. So we are, Mr. Zulus, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, please.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to ask on the, on the meeting dates, and maybe it's not a discussion you want to have now, but at some point, we should discuss whether we want to meet in person. Seems, we, we had some discussion of that at some point, and whether we want to try to do a hybrid, so I just wanted to raise that, I'm not sure if it's germane for discussion now, but, but it's something I think we should think about.
Let's put it on the agenda, it's a good, good topic, and we'll see what the agenda looks like for the twenty-first now, or immediately after the first of the year. Might be a good way to begin the new year.
So the numbers are going up again?
That's, that's what's in the back of my mind, I've been hearing the same thing, Richard.
The numbers are going up.
Yeah, and, and a couple of three categories of virus right now, and maybe Roxanne can give us some sense of what's happening in that arena, and what we should be looking at.
We're just seeing a lot of respiratory right now, a lot of respiratory illnesses, not always all COVID. So I, things that we're seeing are a lot of upper respiratory stuff going on, viruses. Some COVID, but not a lot from.
Keep our eye on it, it's a shifting environment. If there's no other business, entertain a motion, Richard?
Moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, thank you, one and all, and we look forward to seeing you on the twenty-first.
Thanks.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.